Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this candidate forum being filmed on Wednesday, October 13th. It's for Independent School District 709, School Board District 1, and District 4. My name is Susan Nelson, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, as well as a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. I have the pleasure of moderating. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this general issues forum for the Independent School District 709, School Board District 1, and District 4 seats. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to participate in the local school district and in this event. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. The League of Women Voters Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. Let us pause to acknowledge our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all of our activities. And you're invited to join us. For information, check our website at www.lwvduluth.org. The League is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a League, do not take stands on issues, we do study and study various issues. We do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at today's forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters Duluth. And our sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any individual candidate participating. Please remember to exercise your right to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, or before. At this time, I would like to introduce the school board candidates. Running in District 1 is Rosie Luffler Kemp, who is joining us today. Also running in District 1 is Donna Krivagorsky, who is not able to be here. District 1, 1, 2, 4 through 7, the city of Rice Lake, and 4 townships. And running in District 4 is candidate Jill Lowfald. And District 4 precincts include 21, 26 through 30, and 32 through 34. Thank you, candidates, for being here. Our forum will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement, followed by a questioning round. The questions have been vetted by our Voter Services Committee. The candidates were not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide their response. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked questions in a rotating order. The order in which they will respond was determined at random, and we'll rotate the responses throughout the forum. After the questioning round is completed, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement. So we'll begin with opening statements, which will be timed, and I have some time cards to show you when your time is up. So we have a two-minute opening statement first from candidate Luffler Kemp.
Do you like me to begin?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you again, League of Women Voters, for hosting this opportunity for citizens to learn more about us as candidates. And thank you, Susan, for moderating it. I've been a longtime League member, so I really value these forums. I, again, am Rosie Luffler Kemp, and I'm the District 1 School Board current member. I've served on the board for eight years. I've been elected in 2013 and re-elected in 2017, and it's been an honor to serve for the last eight years as a Duluth Public Schools School Board member. My husband Ken and I have four children that have gone through the Duluth Public Schools in the last 10 years, so I understand the challenges and the strengths of our district. I also have a master's degree in social work. I work with kids in foster care. I've been a former community organizer. I understand a lot of the issues that our families and students are facing around mental health. And also, as a community organizer, I've brought people together around a lot of different issues. I am excited to serve again the community and serve the Duluth Public Schools. I've been in the community for 27 years, and I've been involved with many organizations across the district. And right now, we're at a critical time in the district, as well as with public education. And I believe, and many people believe, it's important we have experience on the board, we have knowledge on the board, and we have leadership on the board. And those are some of the reasons why I'm excited to run again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll get an opening statement from candidate Lowfald.
Hi, my name is Jill Lowfald, and I am seeking reelection for District 4. And I, like my colleague, member Luffler Kemp, want to thank the League for this opportunity. Like you stated in your opening, I think that an informed citizenry is, you know, just so important. And there are times when I feel school board races in the whole scope of things, whether it's our city or other cities, don't often get the opportunity to meet the public and to share views, and for the public to really understand, you know, the experience of school board members, what it takes to be an effective school board member. And so I really appreciate this opportunity to come here today and be able to meet the community in kind of a different format because of our restrictions with COVID. So again, my name is Jill Lowfald, and I have deep roots in District 4. That is the area of our city that goes from Fond du Lac, Gary, New Duluth, all the way through the Grand Avenue, through West Duluth and Spirit Valley, all the way out through Lincoln Park and West End, all the way to Masabi Avenue. So it entails our schools of Stowe and Lincoln Middle School and MacArthur Elementary and the High School of Denfeld. And so it is these deep roots. I grew up in Morgan Park. I spent my, bought my first home in Morgan Park, and I have spent, good or bad, my entire life in the Western Duluth. So I have these deep roots, which bring a passion for me to serve on the school board, to represent District 4. I also have a lot of experience. I'm a retired Denfeld English teacher. I've spent 40-plus years as a teacher and as a debate and speech coach, and I have trained over 1,000 high school students to use their voice. And so I am honored to be able to seek reelection and use my voice to benefit the school and our communities and, best of all, our children. So it's with these deep roots and experience that I seek reelection.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to the, to the questions that were solicited and submitted by the organizing committee. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond, and we'll begin with candidate Lowfald. The first question is, "Please give examples of how you work collaboratively with others, even those with whom you disagree. What do you perceive the role of a school board member to be?"
First of all, I'm going to start kind of with that last statement. What do I perceive a good school board member to be? Because I think that ties in then with how do I work collaboratively? And I think, as a teacher, I have always been trained and have practiced to work collaboratively, and I just brought that skill into the board, and I'll explain a little bit about that. But first of all, I think that the, the role of a school board member, or what makes a good school board member, is certain, that passion that you bring to education. You have to really believe in public education. You have to really believe that you have a skill set that you can bring an experience to. And I certainly think that spending a lot of time teaching young students brings that experience. And how you work collaboratively with school board members is you have to be open to listening to people who don't always agree with you. And of course, as a debate coach, I've been trained, and I train students, on how to listen to the other side. So certainly by listening, you can be collaborative. I think as school board members, of course, we have to be very careful about open meeting law. We always have to watch that we are collaborating in a more open forum. And that's why sometimes school boards have a lot of meetings, is because in order for us to be collaborative, to come together, to share our vast different perspectives on things, you have to do it at a public meeting. And so that's a way to be collaborative. But I think we, that's why we have seven members on the board. We all bring a different lens, and I go into every meeting collaboratively, knowing that everyone's going to share that lens. And so that's the beauty of a school board and all of the meetings we have. So thanks.
Thank you. And if you need a question repeated, please ask. Candidate Luffler Kemp.
Sure, thank you. Great question. Jill and I, as well as school board members from around the state, are part of the Minnesota School Board Association. And some of the qualities that they suggest when people are considering becoming a school board member are that you're, you are trustworthy, that you have, you know how to do teamwork, you have integrity, you have commitment, you have vision, you have courage, you have respect, that you're willing to spend time doing the school board work, that you're committed to governance, that you're willing to work collaboratively. Those are some of the qualities they look at. And as member Lowfald said, is when we come together, the seven members on the Duluth Public School Board, we come with different life experiences, we come with different professional experiences, we come with different communities that we're involved with across the community. So being able to listen, being able to work collaboratively is really key, because we're making decisions, even though we're both district reps, we're making decisions that impact the whole district. And so there's many examples I could give of working collaboratively, both on the many community organizations I've had leadership roles on. I come from a family of 10, believe me, I've had to work collaboratively. But certainly, that's one of the things that is a key role of a school board member, is to come to a decision at a board meeting and then move on. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll go from the general to the specific, and the first respondent would be candidate Luffler Kemp. And the question is, "ISD 709 administration has been faced with the question of whether to continue to support a grade 4, 5 teaching position for the Ojibwe immersion program at a time when we've seen decreased graduation rates and worsening health disparities for Native American students and populations. The administration has cited low interest in attendance as a reason for not hiring for the 4, 5 teaching position. Do you believe that this is an either-or spending issue, money to address graduation rates and health disparities versus money for Ojibwe immersion program 4, 5? Do you believe the Ojibwe language position should be maintained in the face of low attendance? Please explain."
Well, that's, that's a big question there, and it's, there's not an easy answer to that. But what I will say, a couple of things. One is, our Ojibwe, as well as our Spanish immersion program, I'm really proud that our district went ahead and created immersion programs. That was one of the first votes I had the opportunity to take on the board, and I had the opportunity to go look at model programs down in the Twin Cities. And so we've had that program going on at Lowell, both with the Ojibwe as well as the Spanish immersion, now for, I think, four years now, so a few years. There were low numbers for the enrollment, and that was really one of the difficult reasons why the administration did, you know, consider, should they continue with it or not. And I, you know, I don't have all of the information that they had. I don't have all of the information from the surveys they had with families on that. But I certainly do need to trust that the administration took into consideration, families took into consideration what the numbers were with enrollment in all of the programs at Lowell as well. And I know that there were other investments that were made into the Ojibwe program, particularly with early childhood.
Okay, and candidate Lowfald.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, it's kind of a long one.
Yeah, it's kind of multi-geared there.
"ISD 709 administration has been faced with the question of whether to continue to support a grade 4, 5 teaching position for the Ojibwe immersion program at a time when we've seen decreased graduation rates and worsening health disparities for Native American students and populations. The administration has cited low interest in attendance as a reason for not hiring the 4, 5 teaching position. Do you believe that this is an either-or spending issue, money to address graduation rates and health disparities versus money for Ojibwe immersion program? Do you believe the Ojibwe language position should be maintained in the face of low attendance? Please explain."
Okay, like my, you know, I will try to share a little bit more different ideas than member Luffler Kemp, just because it is a more recent issue. You know, this just came up about in maybe August. And so I certainly want to thank the Native American community and parents that came forward at a board meeting in August to share their concerns about the 4, 5 Ojibwe class. And I think I can speak on behalf of at least myself, that we are not backing away from the Ojibwe program at all. We have a healthy, like member Luffler Kemp said, we added a kindergarten teacher because the numbers in our Ojibwe classroom in that level are high. And in our three, in our 2, 3 program, there's also the numbers are there. So as we go forward, as our 2, 3 become 4, 5, we are certainly going to continue the Ojibwe immersion program. It was just, we got kind of caught in a kind of a communication dilemma where we weren't really knowing how many were going to be enrolled in 4, 5. And the administration in no way wants, wants to put it out there in the community that we don't value it or that not. And the other thing is, is we have added a Ojibwe language class at the high school. At least I know of the one at Denfeld, and I would be interested to know if East has that as well. But I got a lot of good information and good stories from our Indian education advisor at Denfeld about this incredible high school Ojibwe opportunity. So we are committed to our Ojibwe program.
Thank you. We'll move on to another area, and this question goes first to candidate Lowfald. "After a year of COVID-disrupted learning, what efforts are underway and what additional efforts, if any, are needed to create a less disruption in program delivery?"
So that's very, just such an important question to ask, and for our community to understand that we are in kind of this return, recover, and reimagine. And I think we're in recover, because we've returned, but I, there are challenges, and I want to admit that right up front, that I think right now it is even more telling that in recovery, we are seeing a lot of challenges. But we have used the federal and state money that we've got in ways that we think are going to affect the, the ability for students to get back into academics and to find success. But, so we've used money for social workers, we've used money for mental health supports, we've used money for more social workers in both elementary and high school. We still have work to do. I'd love to see us, you know, try to encourage more counseling in the elementary. But we also have supported deans of students that are helping with behavior challenges in the school. But we are certainly moving forward in recovery. I think that it's a, it's an exciting time as well. Our administration has often said that, to reimagine what is going in the future. But we have a lot of good programs and good leadership and good teachers and principals bringing us back from COVID.
Okay, thank you. And we'll let candidate Luffler Kemp.
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, this last year and a half has been challenging to many employees in many areas across the city of Duluth. One of my priorities and deciding factors to run for school board again was because I wanted to help provide the consistent leadership and direction as we navigate the COVID pandemic challenges as a community and as a district, and how can we return our staff and our students safely? And we're still navigating that. We're really navigating that. I think one of the things that we are very proud of as a district is our 1,400 staff last year in the, we did not lay off any staff. They worked in miracle ways, in so many different ways. And so as member Lowfald said, is that we are using our federal and state money for mental health supports, for social workers in the elementary, middle, high school, for additional staff supports, to do the tutoring and the needs with, with our students. Member Lowfald mentioned the dean of students that are helping in the schools as well. I think everyone's taking the lessons they learned from teaching online to be more creative in their teaching in, in school, and people are just glad to be back to build relationships.
Thank you. We have a follow-up question also on health, and it would go first to candidate Luffler Kemp. And it is, "What public health strategies are we employing to keep students and staff safe in an ongoing pandemic? Would you recommend additional or different strategies? Please explain."
Well, I am very proud of the work that our administration, us as a board, have supported since the start of the pandemic, following science, working very closely with our two hospitals here in town, working very closely with the Department of Public Health, following the guidelines from the Department of Public, from the Department of Education throughout the whole time. And we've been stricter in some ways than many districts in the area. And, and so I have, I support following masking in our schools. I support the cleaning guidelines that we have set up. I, I want our students and our staff and our families and our community to be safe. I want us to move, to keep our kids in school, and by doing these kinds of things, and taking a stronger approach, I guess, that is what is going to keep our kids in school. And so I just, I thank the community for the many ways they've supported our district, and I hope that they will continue to help support our district this year with masking, with getting vaccinated, so that we can keep our kids in school and keep their families and all of our staff safe.
Okay, thank you. And we'll let candidate Lowfald answer that one.
I too want to thank our community for the respect and the commitment to their own health and the choices they're making, whether it's, you know, following masking and, and doing the vaccinations. I really want to support what the Duluth community is doing, keeping everyone healthy, keeping our schools open. We have not had as many COVID outbreaks in our pre-K through 12 as some of our surrounding schools or some of the schools across the state or nation. So I want to applaud our community for allowing us to return to school and keeping our kids as safe as possible. I know there's a little anxiety in our community about our return to learn and just the, the change from Governor Walz having kind of the emergency orders and all of the stricter contact tracing and protocol for cleaning. And the Duluth Public Schools is still trying as, as much detail as possible for our cleaning and our contact tracing, but it is a challenge when funding is not following because of our state guidance is not as strong there. So I just want to applaud our, our, our community and tell them that we are committed to keeping students, staff safe and following the next recommendation. With the rise in our local hospital COVID rates and the bed usage, we have to keep vigilant to what our choices are going to be, masking, maybe a vaccination, but we're all going to be watching that closely.
Thank you. Our next question goes first to candidate Lowfald. "How are Duluth schools dealing with staffing shortages, if any, and efforts to diversify the staff? What more might be done?"
This is of great concern for me, really. At times, I think to myself, I don't know if I can spin a positive outcome for our current staffing shortage. I am, I am looking at numbers, I am reading, I am researching, I'm looking at what other districts are doing to somehow bring in new employees, whether that's by marketing better, by raising stipends and salaries. We've got to do something. There is a severe staffing, but we see it in all areas. So again, I am telling, I am aware of our severe staffing, busing, paraprofessionals. We are, we are managing, but we, by the blessing of our principals and a flexible union support and our flexible administration being there, ready to step in. We've had administrators go into the classrooms and sub. We've had administrators do hall supervision. I mean, that's a team effort, because staffing is incredibly fragile right now. And I just want our community to hold us up, to support us, and to share concerns, and if they've got solutions or ideas of what they are reading. And again, then the other thing about bringing in diversity, I am working very hard with our community of color and BIPOC leaders in our community, for them to come into and help us recruit and retain and support and encourage a diverse staffing workforce.
Thank you. We'll ask candidate Luffler Kemp to address the issue of staffing.
Well, Jill really addressed some of the staffing shortages, and, and they're real, they're real all across the board, and they're real for school districts all over. And, and like Jill, I do my research on what other school districts are doing, not only here in Minnesota, but around the country, and I share ideas that I find with our administrative staff, our HR department. And, you know, I also want the community to know, we, you know, we need bus drivers. We need bus drivers. We need to get our kids to school safely. We need paras, we need more food service workers, and, you know, because of COVID, there are people who have chosen not to come back in the school because of their own health and safety, and we respect that and we value that. But it is a reality, and, and so whatever ways you can support our public schools right now, if, around employment, we appreciate that. In terms of diversifying, that's something that we're, we're doing before COVID. We're working very closely, in particular, with our universities. One of the things I've always been impressed with is our school district, is we have student teachers, we have field practice, we have interns from social workers coming into our schools. So that's one of the ways that we can help diversify, is be, by working with our colleges and hiring the students when they graduate.
Thank you. Our next question will go first to Representative Luffler Kemp, and it is, "What additional federal and/or state COVID relief funding is coming to ISD 709 to enhance or maintain our programs? And would you prefer to see the money we've already received or yet to come distributed differently? Please explain."
Well, I don't know all of the money that is coming, and the reality is, is a district, until we know it's here, we can, we can envision, we can do some planning. There's no shortage of ways that money could be used. I would expect for our district, hiring more people, hiring more teachers, hiring more people who could tutor and work more directly with our kids is where we would want to see it. Many school districts are spending some of the money the money on ventilation and kind of health supports, maintenance kinds of things like that. Because we have modern school buildings, new school buildings, we actually have really great ventilation services, so we haven't had to spend money on that. We, so that is one of the benefits of the long-range facility work we did a few years ago. And I just know as we've been considering any COVID decisions, we always go back to what's going to help our students be successful, our staff be safe. And so I would expect that we would want to put it into staffing needs that will help our student needs.
Thank you. We'll ask representative Lowfalt to, candidate Lowfalt, to address the issue of COVID relief funding.
I would really hate to give a figure for how much money the district is available for us and then be wrong. I know we have had a number of presentations by a very talented and skilled CFO, Kathy Erickson, and she has shared that. And if I would have brought my documents from Board Book here, I could have maybe looked at the exact amount. I do know that Duluth was the benefactor of strong federal and state monies. We were fifth in the state for getting the most relief money. And so we are very fortunate that we have skilled leaders that are making the choices of where those money go. And the board has been supportive, and we've looked at, there was a long list given to us about where the money was going, and I think boards supported that. Well, I know they did. The money is coming in phases. So CFO Erickson is very well aware of the pot of money that comes that has to be spent by the end of this year, and then there's another chunk that comes next year. And then we've got money through what I believe is 2024. So we're making very specific choices. One of the ways that we have been spending the money, not only staff, like member Lefler Kemp said, but in technology. That was where we, we had not had devices for students prior to COVID, and we certainly found out what that need was. And so we have technology, and then we have the staff to support technology. So that's another place we've used the money. And of course, I have lots of ideas of where we could spend that money as well.
Okay, thank you. Our next question would go to candidate Lowfalt. Best practices in school budgeting outline steps to develop a budget that best aligns resources with student achievement goals, and that focuses on optimizing student achievement within available resources. There's a longstanding problem of an achievement gap in Minnesota across socioeconomic, ethnic, and geographic lines. In 2020, with respect to four-year graduation rates, the rate for students from lower-income families in the Duluth Public Schools was lower than the state average and lower than the average in most, if not all, other states. The Duluth graduation rates for low-income students are typically at least 30% lower than the rates for more affluent Duluth students. Do you believe the Duluth School District has sufficiently aligned resources with student achievement goals? And what do you do, and what more do you believe can or must be done to improve student achievement and raise the four-year graduation rate for lower-income students? Please explain.
So that, that's a big issue, the achievement gap, also called the opportunity gap. And when it is connected to socioeconomic conditions, I see this as a multifaceted area where we need city involvement, when we need school district involvement, where we need county involvement and state involvement. But to be specific, though, I certainly am aware as a teacher of 30-plus years at Denfeld High School, I understand the achievement gap, I understand that we need to do more for our students of color and our BIPOC and our socioeconomic students. And we are, it's a slow process. We have smart administrators, we have talented teachers. We've got programs in place, and I could list off a litany of programs that we have in place in the elementary, the middle school, and the high school that are currently addressing the specific needs of our students who are not succeeding. And again, I mean, and it's a, it's a balance. It's like, how do we really lift up our students that need the support, that need the extra academic strength, and at the same time, keep rising our high-achieving students as well? So we do have the understanding, we have the staff, we have the commitment, we have the knowledge. But I know, I'm not going to deny that we need to do better. And as each year goes, even with COVID, COVID was almost, you know, we got some extra money for that support for, for our students, and we just have to stay vigilant. I know the full community service schools are one of the ways we're doing it, and I'm sure member Lefler Kemp can elaborate on other programs we're doing as well.
Thank you. We'll let representative-
Well, that was a huge question there. And I was debating, do I talk about budget and how the budget works, or do I also talk about how we do our budget processes? So I'm going to try and address two things because my colleague Jill really did a good job talking about some of the, kind of the broader needs with the achievement gap. And, you know, first and foremost, the achievement gap, the opportunity gap, isn't just a district problem in any district. And it's a, but it is a concern all across the country. We need to continue, like we have, to partnership with our city, our county, our state, and our federal government. We do, we partnership with many community groups, including the Duluth Superior Community Foundation. We've been involved with them on a program around the opportunity gap right now as we speak. And we, in Duluth, I know we're addressing housing issues, we're addressing health equity issues, food access issues. Those are all what fall under the achievement gap and the opportunity gap and the concerns of all of those. And so as my colleague Jill said, we are, we have a lot more to do, of course, but we are addressing it in a number of ways. And I'll just say a few more. Expanding our early childhood programs, our immersion programs, our home visits. There's just a whole list of different ways we're working to address it, and I welcome the public to go on our website and learn.
Thank you. That was a big question to try to handle in a minute and a half.
Yes.
Okay, our final question will begin with candidate Lefler Kemp. The Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, is a civil rights law signed by President Obama. This act advises us that every child has a right to an excellent education, regardless of circumstances that are outside of their control, like their zip code in which they live or their socioeconomic status. Every school and district in our state will measure and report progress against these goals in a clear and transparent way. How do you assess the district's compliance with the federal act and state reporting mandates? And what changes within the limits set by the state and our federal education departments would you like to see in ISD 709? Please explain.
Well, I am very, I'm familiar with that act. I was a part of lobbying on some of it as a state PTA leader, as well as the Minnesota Department of Education came out and did a lot of education all around the state when it was passed for school districts. Again, a very big question to have some quick answers to, but I guess I would say that there are many efforts that we as a district are working on to make sure all students, regardless of the income, are getting a quality education. We've really invested, for example, in early childhood education programs. We, which is a key, you know, getting kids at the early ages into our schools and into a quality education program is really key. We've also partnered, just again, I stress the partnerships, and that does fall under that act, is that you're using partners with your community, with your schools. And I think that, you know, we've, there's many examples of partnerships I could share. I guess I'm a little hesitant to say what are different ways we can improve because there's just kind of, there's just so many avenues you can look at with this act. So I'm going to stop there.
Thank you. And we'll turn to candidate Lowfalt.
I really want to support and congratulate the tremendous staff, not only in ISD 709, but in other schools across the state and the country. I really don't think there's any teacher, any bus driver, para, kitchen staff, nutrition leaders that get up in the morning and don't want to provide the best opportunity to children that they're going to meet. We really want to provide, and we really believe that every student that attends ISD 709 deserves to be successful. How we measure success is kind of where this act comes in. And I believe of certainly data is going to show what we're doing to succeed, but it's not the only measure. As a classroom teacher, I know that at times, my children, my students felt valued, they felt respected, they felt listened to, they felt included in things in our building, and it might not have shown up on a, on a test. I want our data to give us the direction of where we're going to apply money and where we're going to apply curriculum and where we're going to apply, you know, extra tutoring. But I also want the, the whole ESSA conversation to also say that we measure success by students, you know, in many, many different ways. And I believe that our staff in ISD 709 value and know that children can be successful, and it doesn't always show up on some data or some test score. So congratulations to our staff.
Thank you. That concludes the questioning round of this forum, and we'll now move on to closing statements. So at this time, we'll ask each candidate to give us a two-minute closing statement, and we'll reverse the initial order and begin with candidate Lowfalt.
Well, again, I just want to thank our League of Women Voters. I want to thank PAC for giving us such a classic production site and cameras and mics, and just feels like we're reaching out to our community. So I just want to thank all of those involved. You know, Maya Angelou, one of my favorite poets that I really enjoyed teaching our students of her rich language, used to say, when I know better, I do better. And I've spent four years on a school board. Wasn't my intention to retire and run for office, but I have been enriched and blessed by the opportunity to serve the district. And I've learned a whole lot in four years. I've often thought that maybe just four years would have been enough. But I also think, much like my colleague, member Lefler Kemp, said, is that I want to return to the board because we have had a tremendous challenge with COVID and all of the disruption and all of the challenges, also an opportunity to grow. But I want to bring back what we've learned in the four years to make a more consistent and stronger kind of reimagine area. And I'm excited about that. There's a lot of things happening that are so important in our district that I want to be a part of. So I am really asking to return to the board because I think with the experience of teaching and the experience of being a four-year board member, that I can continue to serve our students and to serve our community in a best way. So I appreciate Maya Angelou's encouragement and motivation, that there's a lot that I can learn and still learn, and I bring that too. I am a lifelong learner. I like research. I like reaching out to see what other districts and states are doing, and I bring those solutions to my fellow board members for rich conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a closing statement from candidate Lefler Kemp.
Well, thank you again. And once again, thank you to the League for hosting this forum. One of the joys I've had as a school board member the last eight years, but to be honest, before that, when I was active with the Citywide PTSA, is I've gone out, I've been to every school in our district, I've been to our residential schools, I've seen our online programs. I've been out multiple times. And I love highlighting the strengths of our district because we have so many across the district. Each school is unique, the culture is unique, the partnerships they have with their neighborhoods and with their communities and with their families is unique. And there is just really wonderful things happening across the district. We don't always hear the headlines of the news about all the wonderful things going on in our schools. But as a board member, that's one opportunity we get to see and learn and get a lot of background information on. So I'm excited to continue to get out to our schools. As I've been door-knocking with this campaign, like all my other campaigns, it's been a joy to answer people's questions about our schools and decisions that have been made. And so for me, it really has been a privilege to be a school board member here in Duluth. My kids, all different learners, had a great education, so it's one way I can give back. I've been involved with many youth-serving organizations over the years. And so it's great for me to continue to see kids have a variety of opportunities. And I think we have many strengths as a district. Education's also very personal for me because I'm a first-generation college student. My parents were, did not graduate from high school, so public education's been a passion for me to support and make sure every child has a variety of opportunities. And that's what, one of my commitments as a school board member.
Thank you both. So this concludes this candidate forum for the ISD 709, District One and District Four school board seats. It is our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time setting such as this. So if your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact the candidates directly. We hope this program has helped you learn more about the candidates and issues so that you can make informed choices at the polls on Tuesday, November 2. So we thank the candidates, PAC TV, and you for making this event possible. PAC TV will carry this forum and others. Check their listing for a schedule of times. Links to these and other forums will also be on the League of Women Voters of Duluth website. So thank you, everyone, and good afternoon.